Good evening, I will call the Dublin City Council meeting of Monday, August 26th, to order. I believe we have a Boy Scout with us by the name of James Reynolds. James, can you come on up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I guess I should check, you know the Pledge of Allegiance, right? Good man.
(inaudible)
Under the special presentations portion of-
We need the roll call.
Oh, yeah, roll call, yeah.
Mr. Keenan, Ms. Aludo, Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms, Mayor Peterson, Mr. Reiner, Mr. Rosa, Ms. Fox.
Frank County Children's Services has the levy renewal up Doris Moore. Are you with us, Ms. Moore? Welcome. So what do you want us to know about the levy?
First of all, I want to tell you a little bit about Children's Services.
Okay.
For those of you who may not know, you probably do, but as you probably know, Children's Services is the county public agency responsible for all of the county's abused, neglected, and dependent youngsters. Unfortunately, the agency works with over 30,000 children in this community every year, 30,000 a year. Children come from all parts of the county, it is not isolated to one area, but the agency provides services to the families and the children. It works with over 100 partner agencies and provides over $71 million to those community agencies to help support the families. 67% of the agency's income comes from property tax levies. They have two levies that are spread five years apart. A 1.9 mil levy that was renewed in 2014, and this levy, a 3.1 mil levy, was passed, originally passed in 2009, and expires at the end of this year. Without renewal of this levy, the agency would stand to lose 42% of its income, or $85 million. So obviously, that is a big chunk of dollars, and the agency very much needs to pass it. It is a renewal, we just found out Friday, we will be issue 10. It will not cost you any additional money for your property tax. What you're paying now, you will continue to pay, no increase in taxes. So, any questions?
Any questions from council? Yeah, I worked in the county prosecutor's office for a number of years, and the first day, the first step you go through is in the juvenile division, and you represent a lot of the children's services agencies, and the kids that are going through the system as abused, neglected, and dependent kids, and it is unreal-
Isn't it?
...what goes on right here in our community. So you are doing unbelievable work, so thank you very much for what you do.
Well, I know, I worked there for 35 years, I retired, but they had me back to help support the levy, so.
Well, that's fair. And it's really important to point out that it's a renewal, not an increase.
Not an increase.
It makes a big difference to people, so we will get that word out, and thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
It is also, in a similar vein, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, Amber Miller, you want to come on up? Tell us who you are and what your role is with the National Children's Cancer Awareness Month.
So, I'm Amber Miller, I work at the American Cancer Society. This is actually our executive director, Christine Mills, so I'll let her share a little bit.
Hi, thanks for having us tonight. We were fortunate enough to bring one of, a two-time childhood cancer survivor, Abby Dunn, she's been cancer-free for 15 years. We, as an organization, we know children under the age of 14 will, the largest killer of children under the age of 14 is, or the second-largest, excuse me, is cancer. So, we're making great strides, we have made some progress, but we need to make more. We, as the American Cancer Society, have 68 grants currently in effect, with over $37 million in childhood cancers, but there's still some that we don't have a cure for, and still some we don't have treatment for, so we're always looking to raise awareness and raise more funds so we can find more cures.
Fantastic, thank you so much for coming in. I do have a proclamation in this regard, and I will read it. "Whereas September is the National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and the city of Dublin commends the American Cancer Society for its efforts in making continued advances in that will improve the outcomes for childhood cancer. And whereas cancer is the leading disease-related cause of death for children and adolescents ages 1 through 19, and an estimated 11,060 children aged 14 and under will be diagnosed with cancer in the U.S. during 2019, and with 1,190 children losing their lives to cancer. And whereas substantial progress has been made against the most common types of pediatric cancers, boosting overall survival rates. And whereas the American Cancer Society is deeply committed to saving lives from childhood cancer, and is funding research that helps to better understand childhood cancers and develop effective therapies without compromising the quality of life of the children and his or her family during those following treatments. And whereas, as of August 1st, 2019, the American Cancer Society is supporting 68 active multi-year research grants for a total of $37 million specific to childhood cancer. And whereas the American Cancer Society is available all day, every day, to provide information and support to those facing cancer, including a live 24/7 helpline, staff with trained cancer information specialists to provide information as well as connections to programs and services. And whereas the American Cancer Society offers interactive online tools to help patients, family members, and caregivers learn how childhood cancers are typically treated, find insurance and other payment options, and identify free or low-cost resources in their geographic area. Now therefore I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the city of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, to hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage Dublin residents to show support for the American Cancer Society's fight against childhood cancer, and support for those who are being treated, or for those who have lost loved ones by wearing or displaying a yellow ribbon during the month of September. Signed this 26th day of August, 2019." So I will give this to you, and thank you for everything that you do, and we appreciate all that you do. Congratulations to you, you've been cancer-free for how long?
15 years.
Wow, that's fantastic, that's fantastic. You want to picture?
Yes, I guess I want to.
Take a picture.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Okay, two very worthy causes. Onto citizen comments, Chris Worthing? How are you this evening, Chris?
Good, how are you?
Good. The floor is yours, as they say.
Perfect. So, over the last four years, we've held five very successful national archery tournaments here in Dublin. We just finished up Olympic trials, it went very well, our numbers were up by 30%, we were live on TV through 11 sports to 55 million houses, and 13 countries, so that was pretty cool. We are trying to come back next year, and we've hit some roadblocks, so I'm kind of here for some advice. We're having trouble procuring the fields for next year, five days in August, tried to go through all the channels to get everything done, but we're just hitting some roadblocks with Dublin soccer. So, I just figured I'd come to you guys and find out whether it's something that you guys have some advice on, or, you know, if we should start searching elsewhere.
This is how this goes, Chris, you look at me, I look at Dana, Dana looks at Matt. So, let's skip all that, Matt, can you get hooked up with Chris and sort of figure out what the, what the roadblocks are, and whatever solutions there may be?
Yeah, we've had a pleasure of hosting Chris in the archery tournaments over the last couple of years, and, you know, we look forward to working with him. Chris, we can certainly talk offline, and-
Okay.
-let's get some schedules together. I'd also like to invite the soccer community, let's see what we can do to work something out.
Okay. Sounds good.
Do we know how many bed nights that that might create for the city? Do you have any idea?
Last year, we did about 700, we looked at probably a 20% increase based on the rest, 700, 800, I don't have the numbers in front of me, I apologize, but based on the growth from this year, we're not holding that tournament again this year, but elsewhere, next year we should see about 20% growth on that.
Good, thank you.
Chris, what's your position in all this?
Yeah, so I run our state organization, I also run our local organization, and unfortunately, I also run our regional organization, so I just try to hold the event, organize the event, and do the best I can with that, honestly, yeah. Volunteer.
Sound like an overcommitted guy.
I am.
I do think it's important to communicate to staff that it was a really exciting time, brought a lot of people to town, it's pretty easy on the fields-
Yep.
-you know, compared to some of the soccer tournaments that we run, so we really would like to be able to reach some agreement that would, you know, satisfy all parties.
Sure, we would too, and we love Dublin, and we're flexible on how we work with stuff. We're not really flexible on dates next year because of the Olympics, and so it really just corners us on dates, but as far as everything else, we're pretty flexible, so.
What are the dates you're looking at next year?
August 26th through August 30th.
So we have nearly a year to, well, we have a year to-
We only have really about three weeks to lock it down, because if not, I have to either secure another field or find another host for the event, so. USA Archery has to put it on every year.
Sure.
I was there for the event, and I had not had an opportunity to see archery before.
Yeah.
Very well-run, the parking lot was full of every state in that, we were going down reading license plate. It was a beautiful weekend, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, I can't say I fully understood everything, but some amazing athletes, and it was incredibly well-done, so.
Well, thank you, thank you.
We'll figure it out.
Awesome. Thank you guys.
Thank you for coming in, Chris, we appreciate it. I do not believe anybody else signed up to make comment, if anybody likes to make a comment about anything that's not on the agenda, just raise your hand, and we'll sit here and patiently listen to you. Seeing no hands, we'll move along. The consent agenda, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes, well, just make a motion that we approve the minutes of the August 12th, 2019 regular meeting, is there a second?
One second.
And?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms.
Resolution 42-19.
Approving and accepting the plat for Riviera West subdivision. Good evening, mayor, members of council, this resolution for the acceptance of the preliminary plat for Riviera West was tabled at the July 29th meeting of council, and we have a bunch of new information to catch you up on, based on the concerns that were raised at that hearing of that particular application. So just to remind you, outlined in blue on this slide is the 13 and some change acre site that is under consideration tonight, and if you remember, this was set aside at the original rezoning of the Riviera subdivision for the potential relocation of Deer Run Elementary, and ultimately, that did not work out here, and the applicant has decided to move forward with the plating of this property. So the property has zoning in place under the regular zoning code, which is for the R district, which allows residential uses on lots that are 40,000 square feet, so a little short of an acre, and the process that we're looking at for acceptance of the lots is a preliminary plat as well as a final plat. So the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and recommended acceptance of the plat at their meeting on June 20th of 2019. The couple of things that we wanted to talk about and follow up on that came up at the original review of this resolution was the concerns raised by both the commission as well as city council regarding the vicinity of the athletic fields of Jerome High School adjacent to these lots, as well as open space, acceptance and maintenance of open spaces within this proposed Riviera West subdivision, connectivity through the schools, or to the school site, I should say. And then, there was also a question raised regarding whether or not this particular portion of the neighborhood would be part of the association for Riviera, to which the applicant has responded, that they would be part of the Riviera Association. And as you can see here on the east side of the site, the Section 4, which is the last section within Riviera, which is on this particular cul-de-sac, is nearing completion as well, so there are not many lots left to be developed within the existing Riviera subdivision. The preliminary plat, as I said, would subdivide the 13.5 acres into 11 single-family lots, and the lots range from just under an acre to about an acre and a third. There will be right-of-way provided and platted, which will be a new street called Bova Court, and the applicant is proposing two open space reserves, which total about 1.3 acres, and that is in excess of the subdivision regulation required open space that would need to be provided. Bova Court there on the north end of this subdivision has access from Casio Lane, which is a public project that was completed just recently, and provides access from Highland Croy on the west side to the Riviera subdivision, then on an eastward motion. I've provided this slide here to show council that one of the reasons why it was staff's request to have the open spaces within Riviera West, which is this square-shaped site here on the west, be treated the same as open spaces within Riviera currently, so everything that is indicated in green on this slide is open space that is owned and maintained by the city of Dublin, or will be maintained by the city of Dublin once we have worked through all the outstanding items that need to take place to fulfill zoning requirements that were approved by the planning commission, and we've been working with the applicant over the last few years to ensure that free replacements are taken care of, and maintenance is the way it was envisioned when it was first zoned. So this half-circle shaped is an open space reserve within Riviera West that seamlessly feeds into existing ponds that are being modified for stormwater management, for both Riviera as well as Riviera West. And then, on the southern end of the site, is also a open space reserve with the stormwater management pond, that again is seamlessly connected to open spaces within existing Riviera that are maintained by the city, as well as flow into the larger stormwater management system that is part of the city. So, that is the reasoning behind staff's request of the applicant to make both of those reserves be part of the system that they are immediately adjacent to, in terms of feeding the stormwater management system that is public throughout the city, as well as providing a maintenance standard and a maintenance schedule that would be the same as immediately adjacent to those open spaces. And if you recall, the reserve that is indicated in the northeast portion of Riviera also includes a pond, it's not visible on this slide here, but this was one of the areas that was requested to be owned and maintained by the city during the zoning process, because, again, it served a public stormwater function. Here is also a slide that shows the storm sewer location, and as you can see, in the northern portion of the site, where that pond is being modified, and the pond really straddles both neighborhoods, there is sewer in place that feeds from Casio Lane, which is a public street, into the pond, and then into the larger system that is including this rather large facility there on the southern end of existing Riviera. Councilmember Fox had requested that I provide a slide that shows the existing connections that are in place for Riviera, so the dotted lines are cart paths that were reserved to be converted into bike paths throughout the site, and then the solid red lines are new paths, and then the blue lines are sidewalks throughout the neighborhood. What this does not show is the location of Riviera West, which is approximately in this area here to the west. And while this plan includes paths to the north, which would access Grisel Middle School, at that point in time, there were no paths planned to access Jerome High School, and there is this little corner here on the southwest area that is immediately adjacent to the Jerome Athletic Field properly, property, excuse me. During the Planning and Zoning Commission review, there were comments regarding connectivity from the new subdivision to the high school, and we have since met with the applicant, as well as with representatives from Dublin City Schools, to work through those details. At this point in time tonight, we do not have a resolution, so staff's recommendation stands with what was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which would be, you will see this again in its final state, so a final plat would be reviewed by the commission as well as by city council, and we've determined there is still time at this point to work through those path connection details to the school property. My last comment on what we had discussed in July was the notion of the activity that is taking place on the athletic fields, and during the planning commission review, Dublin City School Superintendent Dr. Hoadley had mentioned that even though it is a football stadium per se that is adjacent to this neighborhood, there are a lot of activities that take place throughout the year, whether it's cheerleading practice, band practice, he was very adamant that it is not seven football games in a 12-month period, and we had requested that the applicant do two things. One is increase the landscape buffer, which is on the western boundary of the site, from 30 feet to 50 feet, and also provide a note on the plat similar to what was done in the development text for Riviera when it was zoned, to alert the public that there is an awareness of this activity that is at the school throughout the year, so the applicant has agreed to do so. This application comes to you with a recommendation for variances from the subdivision regulations, which really deal with somewhat of an outdated standard in the subdivision regulations versus the standard drawings that engineering has in place, so everything that is requested here is really staff-driven to make sure that the applicant's street layout, pavement sections, and so forth, meet whatever else is done in the city and neighborhoods, so the applicant has agreed to do so, and we would recommend that the council approve those variances. We're carrying forward the conditions from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and largely they have been fulfilled, except for the connectivity to the school site, which, again, there is more time to review that and finalize that with the final plat. And then, staff would be before you tonight with two additional proposed conditions, one that the plat note be included, addressing the high school noise and activity, and then also that the landscape buffer be increased from the 30 feet to the 50 feet, as I had mentioned, so those two updates we would expect to happen between now and final plat. And with that, the applicant is here with their representative, and I am also here obviously to answer any questions that you might have.
So, just to make sure I understand, Claudia, so there are five variances that are included in this, and then between P and Z and council, there's six conditions?
That is correct.
Of those six conditions, five have been resolved, agreed to and resolved?
Agreed to, yeah.
And the one that has to do with the connectivity hasn't been resolved yet, but there's still time to fix that?
That is correct.
Okay.
So Claudia, have all the paths been developed, the internal paths for bicycle and pedestrian, are they all finished now and in place?
They are, and there was a slight change in the path that is in Section 4, so on this particular drawing, you see it sort of veering to the east, it actually is now, as it exists today, going straight north to intersect with a bike path that is on that public street. But yes, they are in place.
The discussion on the connectivity, is that because we haven't yet worked out the proposed location of the path, or what seems to be the problem on that? Is that our fault for not working that out, or where are we at?
Both. I would say that the applicant could probably speak to that a little bit more, we've had a couple of discussions with options for where that connectivity could take place, but we have not resolved at this point whether or not it will.
Does the school desire a connection at that point?
The school is open to discussing where that connection takes place, obviously they will have to build paths as there is non-existent, so wherever that path, sorry, would terminate on the Riviera West side, the school will have to put some funds into connecting it to wherever they need it to go.
Because it's an odd location for a connection, it's kind of in the outfield of a baseball diamond, and, or behind a football stadium, places where you may not, may not be highly desirable for the connectivity to take place.
You're talking about connectivity off of the, where the houses will be set, yeah, there you go. This street here, back to the field somewhere, because if we open that pathway up there, we're going to have the unintended consequence of people parking and wanting to get to the athletic facilities. We've already experienced that in another part of-
And I would say that that is probably, and the applicant can speak to that more, it's probably the main concern on their end, is where drop-off or parking may occur if indeed the path connection was on the southern end of that.
Even drop-off would create a steady stream of traffic in there-
It could.
-doing the cul-de-sac and right on back out again. So they can't get up to Casio Lane somehow and then over to get to the school?
The new street has sidewalk on both sides.
The Deer Run relocation, it didn't really work out, I mean, I can remember this thing first came through and there was a discussion of this possibly being annexed over to the school, and was the school not interested in this parcel, is that what happened?
To be frank with you, I'm not privy to those conversations, so I'm not sure exactly what, what the decision-making process was on that particular discussion.
And then on the width, we're talking about widening the, the actual mound width, that's what you're talking about, not the length, but the width?
A no disturbs zone.
Right, in the no disturbs-
From 30 to 50.
So that would give you a 3:1 slope at 17 feet high?
It should, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Rumah, you want to come up? Given the nature of this, I'm going to swear again real quick before you testify, well, first you identify yourself and all that stuff.
My name is Charlie Rumah, I am the president of Davidson Phillips, the owner of the applicant.
And could you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear the testimony, you're about to provide this council with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, in terms of the school, I contacted them a couple of years ago, and they were working on it, and then I contacted them as late as a few months ago, when they were talking about passing a levy. The levy got passed, I called them after, and they said that they had made a decision to refurbish the existing school and not develop a new school on this site, but that, you're right, this was intended to be a new elementary school. That's why we held it out of the Riviera development.
So we got everything else, though, straightened out, right, but just this connectivity issue?
Well, let me, what I, what you can see, if you look at the circulation of that cart path, there's no connectivity to the high school, and that, if you, if you put a path through on the court that I'm going to be building, it doesn't solve the problem. The real problem is solved when you get to the path location that is in the far southwest corner of Corner Court, and draw, and create-
Can you point to, Claudia, do you know where he's-
It's the one that goes up, heads north there.
Right here.
Okay.
If we can connect this to here, we'll be away from the baseball diamond, and it will connect all of it, it will connect the whole-
I called them after, and they said that they had made a decision to refurbish the existing school and not develop a new school on this site. But that, you're right, this was intended to be a new elementary school.
Yeah.
And that's why we held it out of the Riviera Development.
So we got everything else, though, straightened out, right? But just this connectivity issue?
Well, let me, what I, what I, what you can see, if you look at the circulation of that cart path, there's no connectivity to the high school. And that, if you, if you put a path through on the court that I'm going to be building, it doesn't solve the problem. The real problem is solved when you get to the path location that is in the far southwest corner of Corner Court and draw, and create.
Can you point to, Claudia, do you know where he's?
It's the one that goes up, heads north there.
Right here.
Okay.
If we can connect this to here, we'll be away from the baseball diamond, and it will connect all of it, it will connect the whole system to the high school. That's the best place to do it. And we're, we're talking to the school board now about them extending a path along this route, along this line.
Put the corner map up so we can see how that lays, lays out from that, right there.
So, so right here, we would be taking this and connecting it down to here. And that would, that would connect all of the paths. This path is connected to the path up here, and comes down, goes around, and comes here. And we're saying this would be a connection. And then this path goes all the way through and connects with the rest. So we would have true connectivity to the high school.
And why do they not like that location, Charlie?
I've made that proposal, and I agreed to pay for the, that path in the Riviera open space to connect it to the high school site. And they are, right now, reviewing that. I, I met with, we met with Jeff Stark, and at that time, he said he'd get back to me, he had to go back to the board.
So stay tuned.
So that's why we don't have a decision in it, in it. But that's the, in my mind, that's the correct solution for Riviera. And, and it alleviates the potential problems of us having an enormous amount of traffic and, I mean, it would be a pickup spot for anybody going to football games. It'd be a parking problem, it'd be, it's just not the right thing to do to one acre lots in Dublin. These are sensational lots. So I, I'm recommending that we do it off-site, and I'm, and I'm willing to take care of the cost of bringing that path to, to the school board.
And the fact that's a cul-de-sac, that would just be disastrous.
It would be.
I, I mean, this isn't even like Woods, or over here, Woods Dominion Run, where you can actually circulate through. I mean, that's bad enough. This would be disastrous.
It is also a problem at Belvedere.
Yeah.
If you recall, when we went through that zoning, the neighbors really had a problem with drop-off and pickup, because there's another path south of this that goes right through the middle of the, the athletic fields. So I, I think this would really alleviate the situation and connect Riviera to the high school.
So is there a, do you have a dispute, Charlie? If we pass this the way this is now with the, like Mike said, stay tuned, the schools may agree to this?
Well, I think.
And you're not opposed to connectivity?
No, I think, I think we'll have it solved by the time we get to final plat. And I think that's the way it was discussed and approved at Planning Commission.
Got you.
I mean, I, I really think we can solve that problem, and I hope we, I, just know that I'm trying to work on it.
Understood.
Do you have any idea how much path the school would have to build to connect to the spot where you are suggesting?
Probably about 500 or 600 feet from, from the football field entrance to past, past the court.
And maybe you can work with them on, you know, working out the numbers of that, if they have to go farther to get to, get to the right spot, maybe, you know, you all can come to terms with what that might be.
Let me negotiate with them.
I'm sure you will.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rumah?
I just have one. On the, I guess that would be the south side, and that would be lot, it looks like, I can't tell, it's too small here, but the one adjacent to the pond, is there landscaping that's on that side towards the baseball field?
Yes.
There is. But that's not a, a 50-foot, that's a 30-foot. It's not as much noise, I know, as the football field, but that's against that lot.
Are you talking about Lot 6, the one in the corner, the lower left-hand corner?
I can't see it from here.
This one is 6.
Landscape buffering, similar to what's, what's on the west side. Is that a 30 or a 50? Right, right, yeah.
This line?
I think that's a 50.
There's a 30-foot landscape buffer, no build zone, and a 20-foot easement.
Okay.
20-foot easement for this storm shore.
Okay, great.
So there's a total of 50 feet there.
Right, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Charlie?
When, when this comes back, you're going to have the landscape on the mound, right, worked out, that detail?
I mean, this would not be something that would be part of the plat approval process, but certainly the applicant could provide some illustrative drawings that show that.
Okay.
One of, one of the big problems here, almost all the trees that we're removing on this site are pine, are evergreens, and we have to replace them with deciduous. And so we've, we've got a, I mean, that, that's probably the word, in terms of screening, that's not as good.
Especially during fall.
I thought we had resolution to that of inch, per, per-inch caliber. We worked out a per-foot evergreen.
We don't. The tree waiver policy that we discussed and passed a couple of years ago includes that kind of language in there. This application would most likely not be subject to a tree waiver, mainly because it is not considered one of those category sites that tree waiver would be applicable to. So what the applicant is having to do is replace it per code, and the code does not allow evergreens to be replaced with evergreens.
So we didn't put that in the code, we only put that in the tree waiver policy?
What would we do to, how could we modify that?
Yeah.
Could I request a variance for that?
Yeah.
Can we, Claudia?
Oh, two, well, two options. Variance would be a tough standard to meet, I would say, but a code amendment would be then the other option.
And he can't apply for a waiver? This would not be a waiverable application?
At first glance, I would say no, because we've made those standards for the waiver pretty stringent in terms of heavily wooded site. There is a square foot to, to acreage. We would probably not consider that to be heavily wooded. It doesn't mean the applicant couldn't apply for a waiver. From a staff perspective, I think that standard would be tough to meet.
I think the applicant, it looks like he really wants to address this problem, which makes sense. And if, if you would change it to evergreens, the study says that sound rolls up the mound and over the evergreens, and there's going to be bands back here, and people clashing cymbals and beating on drums.
I mean, it's certainly something.
So I think we should tread it just this.
A combination of deciduous and evergreen probably would be.
We have to figure out a way to solve that problem. That's crazy.
Okay.
At this point in time, the quickest way to do that would be for the applicant to work through the waiver process.
Okay.
We'll try to work through that before we get, come back for a final plat.
All right.
Claudia, I have a couple of questions about the building line. They really vary on this site. Some are 30, some are 40, some are 35. Why are the building lines segmented like that?
It has also to do with the subdivision regulations. So because the applicant is developing this parcel, just under the subdivision regs, they require staggering of building lines in a five-foot increment if you get past six lots.
Okay, but Lot, Lot 1 and 2 both have 40 feet. Then Lot 3 goes to 30, then 4 goes to 40, 5 is back to 30, 6 is 35. It's not, it's not rhythmic.
It's not intended to be, is what the regulations state. The, the larger line on 1 has also to do with the corner lot requirements. The subdivision regulations also have a requirement that lots that are on corners are larger, with larger setbacks?
Well, Lot 11 is on the opposite corner, and it doesn't have the same setback. I would think Lot 11, you would want the larger setback, and it has the smallest setback at 30.
That might have to do with the mass then of the buildable area, yeah, I see that.
Well, it would just feel awkward with the one house 10 feet closer in than the other, but you guys can look at it when it comes to the final plat. It's not, I don't think it's an issue with the applicant, maybe just with some of the layout.
And the house doesn't have to sit on that line either. It just means it can't be in front of the line.
These lots are 259 feet deep. They're not going to be sitting on the property line. They're not going to be sitting on the building line, in all likelihood.
But they can.
Yes.
Is there an outflow? I saw the inflow into Reserve B Lake, or Pond. Is there an outflow for that one?
Yes, there is.
Does it feed to A, Reserve A?
It goes from B to A.
Okay.
If, if that, all of the drainage off of Cashel Lane is, is being put into Reserve B, into the current lake that's on Reserve B. In order for us to, at one time, I asked to remove that lake and fill it, but we can't because of, because of the hydrostatic pressure that would be
Right.
caused with us not having an adequate, an adequate release for this.
I was hoping you were going to say there was an outflow, because otherwise that pond would become very problematic for homes in the area.
There's currently an outflow, a 12-inch pipe that goes into Corner Court.
Okay.
If you look at it, there's a, but that's not adequate. In heavy range, it'll, it just blows it out. So what we're doing is we're, we're taking a pipe of 15-inch, I think it's 15 or 18-inch pipe that is an overflow and goes to Reserve A and into the, into the detention facility that we have there. And then we're taking it from Reserve A all the way to the lake that's existing in, in Riviera.
Yeah.
So we've, we've got it solved, engineering-wise.
Good.
Anything else?
That's all I had.
Anything, you guys down here? Kathy?
I had a quick question. Are all of these interior roads, private roads, the ones that have the cul-de-sac? So this one we're talking about, is that a city-maintained road?
It's a public street.
It is a public street. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie, for coming in. So we're voting on the, the five variances and the six conditions, knowing that the sixth condition is still a work in progress, but we're confident we're going to figure that out, and we'll address this tree thing under separate cover. Ann?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Alito?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ordinance 35-19, Ann?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to PDS Planning, Inc., to induce it to lease a facility to locate its corporate headquarters and its associated operations and workforce all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Jeremiah, you're not calling?
Good evening, members of council. I have no additional information from the last reading. We do have a representative from the company here, a principal with PDS Planning, Jamie Menges, to talk about their project and answer any questions that council may have.
Welcome, Mr. Menges.
Well, thank you very much for having me. Appreciate any consideration to the incentives, and hopefully Dublin is the future home for my business.
We feel the exact same way. Any questions from council?
What, what drew you to us?
I'm a 17-year resident of Dublin myself, raised, raising a family here. And so I've been able to witness firsthand what we do in the community for businesses. And I've kind of appreciated everything that happens in terms of the build-out of infrastructure, helping the traffic flow work through here. If businesses the size of Cardinal Health can get their employees in and out, I think PDS Planning could manage. And all of our families, the folks who work for us that have young families, all reside on the northern side of the city. And we did a heat map of our clients, and that kind of pointed us to the heaviest concentration in the northwest corner. So it seemed to, to be a little bit of an obvious choice for us. One of the things that we're considering, we're currently in Grandview Heights, which is still under consideration. They've been very good to us, the city of, or the Village of Marble Cliff. So we're considering a couple of different options right now, but Dublin is a serious contender for that. And Jeremiah, by the way, has been fantastic, very.
We like him.
Very impressive for us to work with.
What is the average salary range that you're, that you'd be bringing to Dublin with, with relocated here?
Yeah, great question. So our payroll is currently in the $1.4 million range, and we would expect that to grow by approximately like 40 to 45 percent, hopefully over the next five to six years. If we do, any place that we go, we're looking at a seven-year lease based on the size of space that we're looking at building out, and that would mean that we'd be able to add about seven to eight bodies to our organization. We are extremely flexible with our employees, and one of the things my partners and I have considered is, is there a way to create a little bit more of a hoteling arrangement, which would allow us to get beyond that headcount, which would be close to 22, with a little bit more if we didn't have a mandatory requirement to be at the office on a daily basis?
Gotcha. What do you see as the potential biggest stumbling block for getting you here?
I don't know. I don't know that there is necessarily one, probably, obviously being able to negotiate a lease the way that we need to. I mean, I think that would just be the case. But it's a joy talking to several different landlords all at once, trying to navigate that process. But I think that's our greatest challenge. Yeah, and I don't think there's, you know, the organization is 30, we're in our 34th year, founded in 1985, been in Grandview Heights the entire time, but there's not necessarily a tie to that, and the heat map kind of gave us the evidential matter that we needed to say this, this supports it from a client perspective. And of course, really, the people that come to our office every day as opposed to the clients a few times a year, our own people, we've decided to prioritize that. And as these young families continue to evolve, you understand if anyone's got family, the commitment that you continue to take on in the evenings and things. So the commute time will be, it'll be effectively a, a big bonus for our employees.
We will offer, Jeremiah will provide babysitting services for your entire staff.
Hold on, I have four children. No, no, no. He's later on. Anyway.
Whatever it takes. For purposes of our record, JB, what address should we put down for you?
For?
Your residence.
Oh, my residence.
Just for your testimony.
9402 Tartan Ridge Boulevard, Dublin 43017.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else, Christine?
No, thank you very much.
Mike, anything? Anybody?
Jeremiah, your job depends on this.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you.
I can assure you, you probably don't.
It's just better in Dublin, I just gotta promise.
It is. It's greener, it's better, it's...
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Alito?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Thanks for coming in, Jamie. Appreciate it. Good to meet you. Ordinance 36-19, Ann?
Declaring improvement of certain parcels of real property in the city's Borough Street District to be of public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and the Tullis Career and Technical Center for Block F.
Matt?
No changes from the first hearing.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Ann?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Alito?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance 37-19?
Authorizing modification of the city's debt policy.
Matt?
Again, we have no changes from the first hearing, but again, we're also asking for two motions, one to approve the ordinance and one to approve the metrics.
Any questions from council before I make those motions?
Matt, I had sent you an email today with some questions. I'm assuming those will be forthcoming. They're not entirely pertinent to the discussion this evening, but...
I responded to the email you sent this afternoon, but I can certainly respond to any additional follow-up that you need.
My iPad has froze up, so I have access to nothing. All right, great, thank you.
Sure.
Is there any reason to slow this down?
No, it wasn't pertinent.
I make a motion that we affirm the four metrics that are listed in the annual update of the CIP.
One second.
Ann?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Alito?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. And now, Ann, if we could vote on the ordinance?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Alito?
I had a quick question, and again, I think it may be, it's also an informational thing. I think the vice mayor asked last time about a schedule that looks at what the overall debt level will be pending that adoption of that CIP. Did we have that? Was, I didn't see that in the materials or?
We have a debt schedule that is the current debt through the 2018 issuance and the 2019 proposed planned issuance. There was in the 19 through 24, 23 CIP. This CIP plans some additional debt. Is that your question?
It is.
What that additional debt is?
Yeah. And my, my iPad is also frozen up here, so.
Sure.
I don't know if we're, if we have, if it's in there, but I, I didn't see it.
I can give you that information and then I can make sure to respond to it with a written document, so you have record.
I think that would be fine, just to give us the, because I know we didn't do a debt issuance this year, or it doesn't look like that'll happen in 19 from what we discussed. So what does 20 look like and what is that total number if we adopt the CIP? And I, I think that was the question at hand, Chris, last time.
Can you put that in like a staff report, Matt? And then if it comes back and we need to talk about it, we can bring it up, talk about it. Does that affect?
Sure.
Doesn't need to slow down the CIP?
No, it doesn't. I, I just know we, that's important piece of information that we're waiting to see. So that'd be great.
Any other questions? Hearing none, Ann?
Uh, Ms. Fox? Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
I make a motion that we waive, thanks, Matt. We waive council rules of order to address ordinances 39-19, 40-19, and 41-19. Together, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Recuse myself, Ohio Economic Development Authority is involved in this financing and I chair the.
Absolutely, thanks, Mike. You are recused. Uh, on the motion, Ann?
Uh, Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
These are ordinance 3919, determined to proceed with acquisition, construction, improvements for certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio, in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District. Ordinance 4019, levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio, in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District. And 4119 is authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., 970 High Bridge Associates LLC, and Petros Pace Finance LLC, special assessment agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the county treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., 970 High Bridge Associates LLC, and Petros Pace Finance LLC, and related agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvements projects. 5165 Emerald Parkway, Dublin, Ohio project.
Thank you, Ann. Jeremiah?
No additional details than what we covered the last. Uh, one quick follow-up, just, there was a question at the last meeting about some potential streamlining. Talked at a very high level with some other folks about that in other jurisdictions, very preliminary at this point. But we have to talk about some details and some lessons learned from other projects, but we are taking consideration, but no, no final determination at this point.
Thanks for trying, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any questions for Jeremiah? Hearing none, Ann?
Uh, Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Would they like to speak?
He's out there.
Just wandering around.
Oh, he's over there.
He'll make his way. I saw him lobby.
We're gonna have to take the candy machine out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or lock the bathrooms, we can go out there.
May I call him?
He's coming around. Or start laughing when he walks in.
Yeah, let's do that.
One way or the other. He's gotta pay a price, right? He'll be back. I'll give you 50 bucks to put handcuffs on him and bring him in. First rea- First reading public hearing ordinances, ordinance 43-19.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Butler Animal Health Holding Company, LLC, to induce it to lease a facility to retain and expand an office and its affiliated entities, associated operations, and workforce all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
I will introduce it, Jeremiah.
So economic development staff has been in conversations with Covetris, formerly known as Henry Schein, with the current offices at 400 Metro Place about their potential relocation, expansion of their offices in Dublin. This project results in the retention of 228 existing positions and the addition of 100 new jobs by the end of 2027. And the company is required to sign a lease through at least December 31st of 2030 for an office in the city of Dublin. The economic development agreement is a nine-year, 20% performance incentives on withholdings collected between 2019 and 2027. The city's also renewing a dark fiber IRU agreement with the company, which is a separate document, but is, as you see, referenced in the economic development agreement. And the city expects to net $3.6 million over the term of this agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none, we will, see you back on September the night. Thanks, Jeremiah.
All right, thank you.
Resolution 45-19?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the city of Worthington to provide dispatching services for the city of Worthington Division of Police and Division of Fire and EMS.
I will introduce it. Jay?
Good morning, members, or good morning. Wow, it's been a long day. Good evening, members of council. Before you, it's resolution 4519. This will authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the city of Worthington for dispatching services for Worthington Division of Police and Worthington Division of Fire and EMS. That'll make the fourth community that has joined the NREC collaborative, being the seventh and eighth agencies that we would be dispatching for.
Wow.
Part of this agreement is a little unusual, although it's the standard agreement that we have recently passed with Upper Arlington when we began service with them. We had reached an ultimate capacity in the number of employees and staff and the way we staffed the room. That is going to require us to staff up early in order to provide services to the city of Worthington. And as a part of our negotiations, the city of Worthington has agreed to pay a full year's worth of fees starting in the first year of service, 2020, even though we will not begin providing them services until July. What that will do is allow us to hire in advance to make sure we have an adequate enough level of staffing to provide not just the service for Worthington, but ensure that we're continuing the high level of service for Dublin, Hilliard, Upper Arlington, and the townships as well. Also included as a part of this agreement, the city of Worthington has agreed to contribute $255,000 towards the addition of two workstation positions within the communications center. And they will be turning over two radio console positions that are a part of the Coors Radio System COG that we all participate in to help equip those positions as well. Worthington has been a great partner, probably the most logical partner to add to our NREC family. We've been involved in the council of governments that operates our public safety radio system. Worthington was one of the original members in that and has been a partner of ours since 2007. Also here tonight, if you have any questions, is Robin Stewart, Assistant City Manager from Worthington. Worthington actually authorized their city manager to enter into this agreement in May, and we've completed contract negotiations and have brought it forward here for you tonight. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jay. Questions from council?
I just have one out of curiosity. How large do you imagine a partnership like this could be? We have four now, so.
At this point, this is probably the logical build-out for what this center can serve. We're bordered by Delaware County, Union County, and Madison County, which provided at a county level, so it wouldn't make logical sense for us to move to any agencies there. There may be an opportunity for one of the small township police departments, Perry, Sharon, but right now, nothing on the horizon. This is about our logical build-out.
You know, we started this at the township. We joined with Dublin Dispatching. We were doing our own dispatching for the fire department, put the two together, and the economies of scale are really terrific and continue to grow and become good for everybody. Are we bringing anybody over from Worthington?
So Worthington, hopefully, Ms. Stewart isn't too upset with me. We recently hired one of their current employees and that person is in training now. As a part of the agreement, we have agreed, as we did with the city of Upper Arlington, to hold a closed process for open positions, open to their full-time employees only. And part of that is a juggling act, because we need those employees to stay at Worthington until that room closes in September of next year. But they will be afforded an opportunity that's basically an interview and a background check if they're interested in coming over to our center.
Good, appreciate that, thank you.
So the memo states that, I believe, that the, um, that the fire call, EMS calls will first be transferred over and followed by the police calls. I didn't see in there the time, the lapse timeframe between those two events. So is it weeks, months?
So it'll be within three months. Our proposal is July 7th, honor about that date. We will assume primary 911 call answering duties for all of Worthington and begin their fire dispatching. And then honor about September 6th, we'll assume law enforcement dispatching. And at that point, Worthington will close their operation.
Is Worthington dissimilar from us in that they have their own fire and police? They're, they're not with a township and city?
That's correct. These are two city entities.
So maybe be a, a little bit cleaner of a switch for them.
Yes.
Thank you.
Kathy, do you have something?
Yeah, I had a question. I was, uh, there's a paragraph in the memo that says, it speaks about the passage of House Bill 360, and it says that the legislation directs that by 2018, that there shall be no more than four PSAPs. This is 2019, but the next paragraph says it positions us to remain one of those four. What, what is that speaking to?
The, the legislature in House Bill 360 attempted to limit the number of public safety answering points throughout the state. But as it goes, the state can only control that which it funds. Currently, the only funding the state brings back to the local level is the wireless surcharge of 25 cents per month you have on your phone bill. So the state can only limit the number of public safety answering points that receive funding that answer wireless calls. We are currently one of the four in Franklin County. Even though there are 14 public safety answering points, there's only four that receive funding and answer wireless calls. We actually answer wireless calls for an area a little larger than we dispatch for because of cellular phones don't follow logical boundaries and cellular towers sometimes cover an area that's sit in another area. And for that, we receive the disbursement through the county 911 board that comes back from the state that is the money that's collected from that wireless surcharge. And that allows us, we have actually been the wireless answering point for a lot of Worthington since we first became a wireless answering point in 2007. What we're doing right now is we're answering those calls that when we determine they're in Worthington, we're having to transfer those calls to the Worthington Dispatch Center.
Oh, wow.
From here on out, we'll be able to handle those calls one stop, not having to transfer the caller.
Yeah, more and more, it's gonna be wireless, right? We're gonna, it's gonna be.
Currently, now, our call load is 82% wireless devices.
Wow. So what will happen when someone else starts taking wireless calls and becomes the fifth?
There will not be a fifth. What we do in Franklin County is we sit down quarterly and go over all new wireless towers that are brought into the area, whether they're large cell sites or small cell sites, and determine the most logical routing. And our goal with that is to get it right the first time as often as possible. So when these moves take place or someone changes their dispatching service, we sit down with our other partners in Franklin County and go over tower by tower by tower how those calls will be routed, again with the hope of getting it right the first time. Currently, we're still routing wireless 911 calls by the tower in which they're received. When we move to next-generation 911 within, hopefully, the next five years, we'll be able to route the call based on where the caller is.
GPS sort of technology?
Correct. Right now, we can't do that.
Wow.
So you receive a 911 call, where do you go? A wireless 911 call, you know, that used to come to the door, knock on the door. Where do you go now?
Well, we can plot the call. The problem is, we just can't route the call based on where the caller is. So when we get a 911 call from a wireless device, we get an X and Y coordinate that plots on a map and tells our computer-rated dispatch system what the closest civic address is for that, and we can respond to that area. Right now, the FCC standard is the wireless carrier only has to give me an accurate location within 60 meters 70% of the time. There's lots of activity.
And then if the person's in a car and they're moving, well, now you got a whole nother problem on you.
We can attempt to keep polling that call to try to get updated locations, but it's, it's somewhat of a tedious, arduous process right now. We're still answering 911 calls the way with technology that we did 35 years ago. The wireless companies have all this great technology, but they have to squeeze it through the public switched telephone network. That's why we're working towards next-generation 911 now.
And you said that's five years away?
It's about five years away. The state's in the process of procuring the new system now, so however long that takes to deploy. We're ready whenever the state's ready.
Let's hope that happens a little faster. I mean, what are you, 80-some percent wireless now?
Yes.
Wow.
And the expend, the funding for something like that? How expensive is that to transfer over from the way we have it now to the new wireless?
I don't have those dollar figures yet, and that's the question the state legislature keeps asking me. So right now, the state is in an RFP process to determine what vendors are capable of providing that next-gen service and what it will cost. That report will go to the legislature once it's received, and a request will be made of the legislature to not only change the amount of the wireless surcharge per device to fund the system, but expand that surcharge not just to wireless devices, which is the case now, but to expand it as a universal device fee to make sure we accomplish two goals, is the legislature's plan, as they tell us. One, to make sure the new system is fully funded. And two, to continue to send dollars back to the local agencies to support this end of the next-gen 911 call answering process.
Maybe they need to contact the find-my-phone people, because they can pinpoint it within a couple of feet, so. it within a couple of feet, so.
Yeah, I, I get that a lot, why can Uber find me and you can't? Um, we're getting better, we're working harder, we've employed some technology that helps us be better, but it's still a bit of a...
You should all know that Jay's a consummate professional in this, and an expert in this area, involved in, at the state level, regional level, um, with a lot of different organizations that oversee all this, so he's really a terrific resource.
It's clear.
And we thank you for your effort, yeah.
And you know what's crazy, Mike, is everybody that comes in contact with him says the exact same thing, without exception. So the, the operation that you're running is a poster child for what, when the government can do something very, very well, and you do it exceptionally well. Chief, you got anything to add? Robin, you guys, you wanna add anything, or seems like, seems like it's covered, so...
And he was a great dispatcher, we'd hear his golden voice over the radio in the 90s.
Well, and it's the kind of thing that directly impacts people's quality of life, you know, and you just don't realize it until you call, and, and that's when you, and they show up, that's when you realize how valuable it is. So thank you, Jay, what you do for our community, and now you do for practically half of Franklin County as well.
Thank you for your support.
Dana?
Yeah, I just wanna acknowledge Robin and Matt Greason and City Council over in Worthington for coming to the decision to do this. It was not an easy process with the community, and, you know, the community likes to have its own dispatchers for all the reasons that we can understand why, when you want that local person, that is your community, for your community on the other end of the phone. So, thank you for the leap of faith and, and working with us, Robin, and our best regards to Matt and your City Council and your community for, um, the partnership and, and relying on us. We will deliver, we will deliver, so, thank you.
Thank you for being so open.
Okay, with that, Ann?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes, Resolution 46-19.
Authorizing the city manager to cooperate and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for bridge inspection services within the city of Dublin in this jurisdiction.
I want to do so. Megan?
Good evening, members of council. Dublin is responsible for the annual inspection of 54 of the 92 bridges that are located within Dublin. These inspections are intended to identify potential safety concerns of the bridge, as well as maintenance and rehabilitation needs that are, is important for our planning. In recent years, we have been contracting with the Franklin County Engineers Office to complete these bridge inspections at an average cost of approximately $10,000 per year. This year, ODOT is offering bridge inspection services to municipalities that meet certain criteria at no cost to the city. The Scioto River Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge will also be inspected as part of the program after construction is complete. The inspections will be performed by a qualified consulting team hired by ODOT, and they will be in court, in accordance with industry standards. Dublin staff will receive all of the inspection records for our review and analysis and our work-planning efforts. The municipal bridge inspection services program will begin in 2020 and continue for three years till, through 2022. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 46, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council. Kathy?
Why are they doing this for free now? What's the backdrop here?
They have a variety of programs that they offer for locals around the state, and this is just one of them. They, for example, they do some paving within municipalities on state roads that, on state routes that run through municipalities. This is just one of the local programs that they offer.
So this has been around for a while? We just have...
It has been off and on, not continuously, but this is the first time that we've participated.
So we're gonna have issues, I mean, we're on top of 50,000 population here. This is a short-term fix?
Potentially, yes.
Presumably, it will be.
If we sign this agreement through 2022, what happens if we hit that number before 2022? Are we good through 2022 with them?
The agreement will stand, yes.
So, uh, the pedestrian bridge, when that comes online, that's probably requires some significant inspection, and this would be part of that?
Yes, it will. And the reason that it fits the criteria for this program is because that bridge actually crosses over a road, Riverview. If it did not cross over a road, it wouldn't be allowed in the program.
What kind of, uh, issues do we have that are different with that pedestrian bridge in terms of inspection? What do you think it would cost us to hire that outside if we have to do that?
So we, there's gonna be different levels of review. The annual review isn't gonna be as comprehensive or extensive as the every-five-years, perhaps, review. We're actually, um, working with the Designer of Record, they're gonna be handing us over a maintenance manual for the bridge, and that maintenance manual will outline the inspection routine, basically what needs to be inspected every year and how often.
Nobody reads the manual.
We will, we will for sure on this one.
The primary cost of it would be...
We will, we will memorize.
More than it will be.
I figured you would, yeah.
Correct.
More so, yes, but inspection, I mean, it could, the annual inspection fee for that bridge could be $10,000 range, we're hearing, and the more comprehensive every-five-year could be $30,000, yeah.
So does that make it capital or operating?
The inspections would be operating.
They would be operating.
And what's different about the bridge is the cable system. That's very unique, and nowadays, they're using drones to inspect each cable, as opposed to having a person actually rep...
Now, will they review the manual as well, as Mike will not read?
Uh, we will.
And give a recommend, will we get a recommendation for maintenance or only repairs on that?
Maintenance, routine maintenance. The primary objective of that manual is to outline inspection, protocol, and frequency, as well as routine maintenance that needs to be performed on the bridge. And the cables, because, you know, we, all of the pieces and parts of the bridge came from different suppliers, and those suppliers have recommended routine maintenance that needs to be performed on each of those elements. So they're basically taking all those individual manuals and compiling them into a manual that staff will live by, and we will read it.
Anything else from council? Ann?
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Staff comments?
Good evening, members of council. I have one item tonight. It was kinda fortuitous, I had agreed a while back to attend an event today called the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve, and I did that while the weather was miserable. I attended that, and it was a great turnout of, um, veterans and former service members of the Garden Reserve, as well as employers who came out to show their support of members who are active in that service. And it just so happened that yesterday, uh, I attended a, a call to duty ceremony for the first of the 145 Armor Regiment, Ohio Army National Guard in Canton, Ohio, and one of our own, Alex Rosansky, is deploying with that unit to the Middle East. There are 617 members of that unit that left Ohio, or leaving Ohio to go to the Middle East. So I went to lift him up and recognize that, and it was just kind of interesting that that other event happened to be today. And I asked Homer to give me a rundown of how many we currently have on our staff that are in an active Guard or Reserve status, and we actually have 10 members that are active Guard or Reserve. So we are one of those employers, and, and I will tell you for 28 of my 35 years, uh, that I served and, and worked here at the city of Dublin, how great your support of that was. And so, just thank you for continuing to do that, and I'll say it on behalf of all those employees. So our heart, our prayers go out to Alex and his family, but as I told Melissa, we're all here to support her and the kids, and so they'll get through that just fine. So just wanted to report that, thank you.
I saw the, they did a little spot on the news, and they had Jan's picture with the governor on there as well, so.
Yeah, it was a great turnout of the governor and, uh, Secretary, Secretary of State Frank, Frank LaRose, who used to be in one of our units down here at Rick and Backner, and it was a great turnout of folks to, to support them, and the Canton community certainly came out in support as well, so.
Is that it, Dana?
That's it. Thank you.
Council committee reports. P&amp;Z, Jane?
Yeah, let's see, we had, um, last Thursday at that, at P&amp;Z, we had a fairly large attendance by residents on a couple of different applications, and I'm just gonna give you a little general, high-level, um, about what that was. One was, um, Oak Park, which is a, um, an area of, it's called Subarea E, and that's located just west of Highland Court, across from Jerome High School, and that was an application for a change from a commercial to a residential property, um, use. And, um, one of the things that I bring up, the reason I bring this up is because that rezoning will have an effect on costs for private road maintenance, um, having to do with, um, transferring and sharing costs from a commercial use to a residential use, and then that, uh, becomes a discussion for the HOA, the HOA and the residents to bear, which is a, a policy-level issue that we have talked about in private roads. I bring that up because it's surfacing some in our planning and zoning discussions about private roads versus public roads. And I think that, um, we had a, a presentation by many, by one representative of the residents, but there were quite a few residents there that evening, discussing this particular subject, um, of private roads, and I think it's something that we might want to delve into a little bit more on the use of private roads within these upcoming developments, because they're, they can be problematic for some of the residents long-term. So as we have talked about, um, the retention ponds and the cost of those, I think that's a discussion that might be worth, uh, digging into a little bit, because it's surfacing. And then, um, the other...
On that point, do we have an inventory of the, the private roads? I mean, how, what percentage, what would that look?
We do, and, and council has reviewed this a couple of different times over the years. It's something if you wanted to, to be refreshed on that, I think we could pull that together for you and, and post that.
Because they're problematic for the commercial private roads as much as they are. I know over, by perimeter, there's a number of private roads over there that have been very problematic for a long period of time.
Right.
I would recommend we get you that sort of his, history, and...
That'd be great.
Once you take, get a chance to take a look at that, if there's something you wanted to revisit, then bring it back to council as well.
I think, if nothing else, one, to give us that background at this council, and also to help, uh, the planning and zoning commissioners understand and appreciate, as they look at these plaits and look at these rezonings, uh, how they should be handling them. So I think it would be, it'd be very helpful for council to help them with that. The other application of interest was the OSU Concept Plan Presentation. We had, uh, the, the city had a public meeting held back at the Service Center on August 6th with a very large attendance, hearing about the OSU presentation. And, um, the concern of the residents at planning and zoning, and it appeared to at the public presentation, was not necessarily the OSU development, as much as it was the transportation and the road, the future road design of Shore Rings Road, and the traffic patterns that would accompany the development in that area. So, um, I'm just, um, bringing this forward so that you understand that that was a large discussion and concern at planning and zoning. And I do know that HOA leadership and the Ballantyne area are coming together, and we have given assurances both at the public meeting and at the planning and zoning meeting, that council is interested in, uh, working with the residents and the HOA leadership, with city staff and Streets and Utilities, to come together with some, um, some discussions about what's proposed, um, some thoughts from the residents about what might work and what might not work. And I just wanted to bring that forward so that you all were aware of that, so.
Dana, can we get a timeline of how we're gonna be proceeding in that, and what decision point times and, um, community engagement opportunities?
Yeah, we, we can provide that. I know we had committed to the residents that we would come back, circle back on those connectivity issues and, and respond to them, so we'll, we'll get you a schedule.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
That's all I have. Oh, one, one more, I'm sorry, one more thing. It came up as a suggestion, um, the possibility of, of videotaping planning and zoning meetings. Um, and the reason I bring this up is because the conversations that, that occur at the planning and zoning meetings really kind of give a council a real look at how our commissioners are looking at these applications, an opportunity for us to understand the flavor, the, the atmosphere, the thinking, and also the opportunity for us as council members to have, um, a better understanding of how we can help our commission members see the, the, um, direction that council may, I don't wanna say want them to go, but give them an idea of the, the overall holistic look that council is looking at when we look at community plans, the discussions that we have here on the dais about, um, development, and to, to become more of a team member, I think it's very difficult with just meeting notes to understand what happens at planning and zoning, and it's such an important area for our commissioners that I'd be interested to see what you think. We did have a videotape of this last Thursday.
When I was on Planning Commission, we talked about that a, a number of times, and I'm hopeful that when we get the, uh, new council chambers, it'll be, you know, a little more user-friendly to...
Right.
To those functions than it, than it is at present, but I, I think that would be important.
Jane, we've, we've talked about this over many years, and I've, was always a proponent, we could never get the four votes necessary to, to do that, for whatever reason, but the words in the minutes do not provide the context...
They don't.
The body language, the, the, the tone, the whole, you know, the way of, of the meeting, so I think it would be very valuable.
Oh, I appreciate that. I, I think it would be helpful, too. I mean, we have had some absolutely great presentations, not only by our developers, which gives us, is exciting to see new things coming in, by residents who come in and, and actually help us understand, uh, some of the things that the commission members maybe never thought of in their review and criteria. So I just think we have so much to learn.
You know, as you go around the country, uh, vacation or different spots, and, and when you're doing this for as long as we have, you know, you get kinda geeky and you put the local channel on, and so often, you see their P&amp;Z meetings being televised.
Right.
And, uh, so I, it wouldn't, certainly not out of the ordinary.
Be good.
Could staff maybe rattle that around, Dana, and see what you think?
Yes, we can do that.
All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Admin, Chris?
Uh, nothing to report at this time.
Community Development Committee, John?
Let's see, the Community Development Committee met, um, on August 20th. There was four items of business. Uh, the first was historic facade grant application. The committee heard a historic facade grant application for 106 South High Street. The request was for a maximum of $15,000 for exterior modifications to the building and the site, which included site landscaping and enhancement, or extensive landscape plan, creation of an overall landscape for the site and new plant materials in additions to brick seating area, stone, stone foundation restoration, uh, window replacement, exterior painting. Committee recommended approval of the grant proposal with the stipulation that it will be approved by the ARB at their August 28th meeting. We had a discussion, extensive discussion on the West Transitional Zoning District in the Bridge Street District. Uh, an update was provided to the committee regarding public outreach efforts involving the West Transition Zoning District with surrounding neighbors and property owners. Some of the, um, ideas that were included were general, generally, they were supportive of a two-to-three-story building heights lower on Monterey, preferred Old Dublin character rather than the Bridge Park, concern over more traffic, and strong desire for bike lanes, generally supporting of the neighborhood scale, first-floor commercial fronting, no bars, strong opposition to parking garages and apartments on high, or high-rises. Um, there was strong, um, the committee provided feedback on each of the four identified quadrants. The consensus was, the committee agrees of the importance of this area as the gateway to the city and as a transition to this historic district. Staff consultants will develop the appropriate zoning code and guidelines, amendments based on feedback, and proceed with the formal review process. So we're gonna hear a little more on this topic. The, um, next item of business was an update on the DCAP rezoning project. Status update was held regarding the DACAP rezoning project. Staff was, um, began its initial, uh, public outreach with existing property owners to discuss the proposed zoning changes and hear feedback for Phase 1, which would be the Llewellyn Farms Office Sub-District. After connecting with property owners within the adjacent to Phase 1, the code and guideline language will be drafted, and we'll come back to CDC for more review, so you'll hear more from this one. Short-term rentals. Discussion was held regarding short-term rentals and what, if anything, the city can possibly do. The Law Department provided a couple of options. Consensus amongst the committee members was that the short-term rental property owners will be required to register with the city. This will give the city the opportunity to learn more about how widespread this is in Dublin and if there are any issues. So what we found out, and a number, and, uh, committee members commented on this, was, so when a soccer team comes to Columbus, or comes to Dublin from Columbus or some other area, and they're possibly gonna spend the night, turns out that many of them will just rent a house and pack it full of people, rather than use our hotels thereby, thereby avoiding our bed tax. So we're sort of very interested in this, wanna see how this all plays out, catch what all the numbers are, see what's going on. And, um, so we wanna see what the, how many of these there are. City of Upper Arlington has banned these completely, although they are in existence. So if you get on, um, RV, or B, or whatever it's called, you can find them in Arlington, even though they're banned, so. There is a potential, there is potential tax ramifications on this. That's it.
Thanks, John. Finance, Mike?
That's gonna, that's gonna come to council. That will...
Right.
The staff is gonna write that up, and instead of back to committee...
Oh, yeah.
So that one will come to your next step.
Yeah.
That's what we agree to, yeah.
Finance, Mike?
Just, uh, brief, uh, briefly let everybody know that, uh, on September 11th at 6:00 PM, Finance Committee will be meeting with regard to the budget that's forthcoming, so...
Thanks, Mike.
That's all I have.
Public Services, Christina?
Uh, not this time.
Coda, Kathy?
Uh, August is Vacation Month for the board.
Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
Uh, not until a little later in September.
Mid-High Regional Planning Commission, Chris?
I don't know if any of you had opportunity to see the Morpheus video that was put out regarding Hyperloop, but it was, uh, really well-done, and, uh, it was a compilation of all of the stops that Hyperloop had made, including Dublin. So it was a really well-done piece, and I think we, we were gonna push that out as well, so, um, just look forward to have more information on that.
Chris, um, Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Uh, no, thank you.
Northwest Thirty-Three Quarter Group, Kathy?
Uh, no, thank you.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Uh, City of Dublin and the Dublin Arts Council, and Mr. Hadaka, and other major and minor sponsors presented an absolutely awesome Taiko concert. It filled out the school almost completely. There were, I think, I counted 15 Japanese nationals that came and participated in this, and they were awesome, and the students were just utterly fantastic. Just an amazing, uh, display in the arts. It was, uh, I guess there are only two Taiko groups in the entire United States. I got to see and meet the chief's daughter, who was just drumming away and doing a fantastic job. It was just, it was just really awesome. The, the energy, and the coordination, and the art, and the movements, fantastic. So that was the 15th anniversary of Taiko. Rush?
When I was, uh, went to see that group in Machiko, when I visited on behalf of Dublin, uh, the mayor had greeted me there, and we were going through all the gyrations, and all of a sudden, we're at this auditorium, and here he is, suit and tie. The tie comes off, he bends down, his shoes and socks come off, and, and he leaps up on the stage, and he's, he's one of the guys in the, in the Taiko. It was really kinda cool to see this guy transform.
Yeah, it's, it's awesome, really, and the, um, you know, you just gotta salute the mothers who support this thing. There's 100 people on the stage, 100, with drums, and the mothers made all the costuming, uh, just, and, and all kinds of variations. It was, it's, it was really impressive. It's one of those impressive, it's one of those things, you know, I miss wanna see on public TV. It was that good, I mean, like, you know, they'll put on the ladies of Lionford or something. This thing was really of that caliber. Just an amazing artistic feat. That's it.
Is that it? Thanks, John. Uh, Dublin Board of Education, Christina?
Nothing this time.
Washington Township. Fellas, everything good? All right. Dublin Bridges, Jane?
Well, I'll just, um, I'll give a little plug here, just to let, um, you know how cool kindness is. In the last 18 months, Dublin Bridges has raised, uh, or donated to children, residents, and families in the Dublin area, uh, almost $119,000.
Wow.
Um, 3,218 children and families, um, benefited from Dublin Bridges. That many people have been touched. On Facebook, we've reached over 372,000 people. And 1,048 are subscribed to Dublin Bridges. We have over 1,000 people here in Dublin that get the email, watch for the need, and then it's filled. We've had 222 needs posted and 222 needs fulfilled. The, the energy and effort that, that is put into seeing kindness spread throughout Dublin by the folks who not only donate but organize this is amazing. And I think the Dublin, the Dublin Bridges is one of the most successful up and running in such a short period of time, and has exceeded all expectations. And Dublin Bridges is becoming, they're hoping to send this nationwide. This is going to be something that will go from community to community, so even though it was initiated here in central Ohio, they're already in other states. So it's an amazing act of kindness, and I think we should pat our folks on the back and all the people who give, so.
Jill and Sarah do an amazing job.
Jill and Sarah do amazing, they just do an amazing job.
They're just unbelievably hardworking, compassionate.
Right, and they're, and they're in the truck, they're in the trucks delivering washers and dryers, and they just spend so much time doing that, but they have lots of people that help them. The people that support this, and you should get on the website, the people that support this, the businesses that donate a truck, or Pottery Barn who gives lots and lots of furniture, there's just, there's just, there's kindness everywhere, it's just flowing out of them, so. So I just, we have to talk about it, so.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
Okay, so staying right there with Roundtable with you, Jane.
The ICF Institute, great that our staff went to New York City at the Senate, and I know that we're, we're going to be hosting the conference here in 2020, which is exciting. I'm hoping that the council has an opportunity to be engaged in that, that we can welcome many of the cities that are coming from all over and show off what we do here and the story that we have to tell here. So I just, I was excited and loved reading the report that you had in the memo, but would really hope that council gets an opportunity to participate in the, in the 2020 welcoming here, so that's it.
Kathy?
Great, yes, I had the pleasure, I think most of us were there at the convocation this last week, 16,500 students, up 500 this year. I was reflecting, when we moved here, what, 25 years ago, I think the population was close to 16,500, it really was, and that's now how many students are in the Dublin City School. So an amazing set of faculty and staff are there for the kickoff, so congratulations and good year to everybody. I had the opportunity to listen to a talk about the future of retail at the Columbus Metropolitan Club last week. It was a very interesting conversation. I, I don't know, I sort of went into thinking, you know, retail is struggling, but the experts that spoke talked about that the retail figures are growing at a crazy clip, but in very, very different ways. Spoke about delivery systems, the Uber Eats and what that's doing to retail and a variety of other things. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a useful thing to have staff, if we could work on maybe finding out how we could bring some of that information to council, because I thought it was just very eye-opening when we think about the live-work-play environments that we're talking about, what's happening to the malls around us and the Main Street initiatives that we have, that I think it would be an interesting conversation. There were a lot, for me anyway, sort of, gee, I hadn't thought about that, and there's opportunity here, so.
The CMCs, I believe, are videotaped. I know I've watched several of those over time, so we can just watch that, I guess, and summarize it.
Well, that, but I thought, actually, that was just sort of a slice, but actually, maybe, and WD Partners was one of the people that spoke, they're a Dublin business that works in this. So just to think if maybe we couldn't bring some of that back for discussion, because I think as we're thinking about these future plans and we think about the conversations we had at the, the community discussion, I just think it's important that we really think about and look at what some of the experts are saying about what's happening with retail. And I, I think it would be a useful thing, Dana, so I can get offline if the council members seem to think that would be, I just think the whole, the whole game has changed and is going to continue to change, and it'll be useful for us.
We can pull some info together, too, on that as well?
Yeah, and maybe think about having someone come share some things. Thank you very much. And then the other comment that I made in the legislative update, thank you for sharing that with us, I saw that one of the things we were hoping that wasn't going to happen is the change in the SERPs and what's taxable and what's not, and the summary in the, the plan, that the impact on our revenues could be something up towards about a million and a half a year, if I've got that number right, yeah. So has that been incorporated when we're looking at the, I don't remember that in the operating plans, or what's the thinking about that?
Not yet, and one of, one of the things we're looking at is sort of, I'm going to call it the old thermostat, if you're raising money, what's it look like? I think what I've asked Nancy and the finance staff to take a look at is, what are we getting from the state and what's being taken away from the state? I think at this point, if I'm tallying it in my head, we're at about a wash.
Are we?
Yeah, but, but we will, we will get you more information on that. I want to go deep and make sure that we're tracking, I'm also going to be asking COMA, Central Ohio Mayor's Managers Association, do the same thing, because I think, you know, we've had some wins at the State House, they've been very few, but we've had more losses at the, at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, and, and the numbers in there, these are substantial numbers, and the ability to collect revenues in a timely way, there were some updates on that, so I think that would be great. So thank you, Dana. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. John?
I just was reflecting back on the Irish Festival again, I didn't say anything last meeting, but just the magnitude of the amount of people that donate time and effort to that thing, it, we just have a fantastic city that really goes way beyond to make that thing successful, it's just, and then again, I, you know, I usually go around and try to talk to almost literally every person who leases or rents a space from us, and can we make this any better, can you be treated any better, how do you rate us against all the rest of these things that you guys travel to every week or month? And again, I mean, there was really no negative comments. Most people reaffirm that we probably treat our guests, and these are our vendors, better than any place else in the country, and they just are, they're really just happy to come here, just really a wonderful, and the effort, you know, when we, if you think about what the staff does, providing extra food and a place for the band to go and all the other things that just happens to make this a success, it's just phenomenal. And the fact that we had no problems with probably 100,000 people in attendance, and it's just, it's amazing. We have amazing citizenry who comes out and goes the extra mile.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thanks, John. Michael? Christina?
A couple of quick things. I actually wanted to circle back around to my committee report. I have a quick follow-up. I ran into Christine Gurs with Cher, and I reached out to Michelle, and, because we had talked about pickup and drop-off of vehicles having multiple people in them, and so Michelle will reach out to them and see if there are any issues or any thoughts that they have regarding the pilot, the parking pilot, so I just wanted to share that with the group. I wanted to do a quick congratulations on the Concord Shared Use Path, long time coming, so thank you to Concord Township, thanks to all the parents from Eli Penny, who worked, I think, almost a dozen years on that, all in total. Thank you to Megan for following up, thank you for, to Concord Township trustees. I don't think that little stretch path could have happened without all those people. It seems like a little thing, but it's a really big thing when you, when you know that your child has safe passage to school. So I just wanted to shout out a thank you to everybody involved with that process. And when we were talking about 911 and the not having the ability to pinpoint with your cellphone, kind of reminded me of the Dublin Citizens Police Academy, and you go through a whole tour of Enrec, and it's an amazing facility. If anybody has an opportunity to do that, if you reach out to them, they will give you a tour. And the key thing that they tell you when you call 911 is know where you are, because it doesn't matter what's happening if they can't find you. And I would recommend a tour to anybody, it truly is a phenomenal operation. And that was all I had, thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Chris?
I had a couple of things, had the opportunity to do a little welcome to the Moschico drummers on Friday evening, and the energy was high, they were really looking forward to their, their presentation, and they did have quite a few folks that came in town, and the fellow that is the, that they brought in, the professional drummer that they brought in this year, he spoke about why, what Taiko means and what the rhythms mean, and I don't know how true it is, but what he said was, and I thought that it was very sweet, he said, "We come from different cultures, we come from different countries, we come from different religions, we come from all of these things, but the rhythm of the Taiko drum is what we all hear in our mother's womb." And I thought that that was a really...
That'll get your attention right there, won't it?
It was a really special connection that he made, and they certainly were fantastic. Then I have one other thing about the legislative updates and the rate at which we are receiving our compensation that the state is collecting on our behalf, and, you know, I'm wondering if there's anything that we can, we can do to bond together with the other members of the Mayor's Association, COMA, and say, you know, to set some standard of expectation that we expect these, and to have ramifications if they're not met. You know, every other organization, when you are making or receiving payments, there are due dates, and there's consequences for not meeting those due dates, and I'm wondering if, if we would have any strength in numbers to have hard due dates and consequences if those aren't met? Because certainly when they hold our money for long periods of time, they're collecting interest on it, and we are paying interest on things, on money that we don't have. So, I don't know, it's probably been, been talked about a little bit, but I thought, I thought the, the OML legislation bullet was very helpful in saying, you know, we don't necessarily just have to wait till you want to give us our money, that's not how the world works.
Yeah, well, there's, it's been talked about a lot in the spirit of drumming, we've, that's one drum we pounded pretty hard at the State House. Kevin, Nancy both have been down there a lot talking about this, COMA's been engaged, the Ohio Mayor's Alliance have been engaged on this, we're at, we're at a lawsuit over it as well, which continues to progress on behalf of all these, not us, on behalf of all these cities, of all these cities in coalition together, working on this, so been very loud about that and not having a lot of success to this point, but we'll continue, when I say we, every indication I have with fellow members of these organizations, including the Ohio Municipal League, will, will continue to be very loud about that. It's a great point you make, and we've got to keep pounding drums and trumpeting that, so we'll, we'll do that.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, so I have a couple of things, and they're kind of all interrelated. So an update on the trip that Chris and I are going to be taking. At your tables or places here, there is a ceramic cup that was brought to us by Mayor Atsuka from Moschico, Mike's friend, the drumming guy. So those cups are for you. Last Friday, I had an opportunity to meet with the mayor, who was here in Dublin for the drumming production on Friday. So he brought this, and earlier in the day, this was fascinating, Jeremiah and I went to a company called Kasa North America, which is over in Metro Place. And this is a Japanese company, and all that they do is they do the engineering on the inside panel of the driver's doors of specific kinds of cars. That's their entire business, which is amazingly complicated when you look at all that they do and all the different companies that they produce this for. And so we took a tour of their facility, and we sat down with Jeremiah, and Jeremiah, by the way, is fantastic. He, he understands what the, he understands the language these companies speak, he knows what they need, he's attentive to their needs, and they were having a conversation, I guess they had asked for us to stop by, because at the end of this conversation, they said, "We have two problems. We have the, the problem of communicating large volumes of data from what we're working on with the other sub-agents that are working on the other things of this car." And I said, "Well, I would think Dublin would solve that problem. Don't, can't you get all that information through Dublin?" And they looked at us and said, "What's Dublin?" So they are now, Jeremiah is hooking them up with who they need to hook up with, and their eyes just lit up, thinking, "Oh my God, this could be the solution to our problem, and it's right here," and, you know, so we started talking about that, and, and they said, "The second thing that we need to do is we need to improve our relationship with Honda." And ironically enough, the trip to Japan that we're going to be taking is specifically intended to foster those business relationships and those economic incentive kinds of things. So we are heading over there to do those kinds of things, and even though there are Japanese companies right here in Dublin, just because, you know, you're from Japan, or you, do you know Mr., you know, whatever, because he happens to be from Japan, there is a lot of communication that we can help facilitate right here in our community that can help these companies who are locating here, relocating here, staying here, they're, they're based primarily out of Detroit because of the automobile industry, but they want to move more of their operations here, a couple of more of their divisions here, because of the connection with Thirty-Three Corridor and Honda and, and all of that transportation-related stuff that we are working so hard on. So it is stuff that really can make an enormous difference. I know that Mary's, Marysville has sent a huge contingency to the, to the, this Japanese conference, aren't they? And there's a lot of other central Ohio communities, so that'll all be very interesting. Now, that is going to take, but Nancy has put together a fantastic itinerary, and since we're on the other side of the world, we are going to stop in Dublin, Ireland, and say hello to our friends in Dublin, headed on to Japan to the, to the Economic Incentive Council there, and also swinging through Moschico and seeing our friend, the mayor in Moschico as well. So it's going to be a lot crammed into a very short period of time. It will mean that both Chris and I will be gone for the next council meeting, which implicates you, John, because the charter says if the mayor and the vice mayor are both gone, the acting mayor shall be the council member based on the length of continuous elected years of service with the city. So you shall be running the next city council meeting, September the 6th, because we will not be here. I come back that day, and Chris is going to have to continue on with the conference without me, because I need to get back for family reasons, but, so, it's going to be an exciting trip, there's a lot we've crammed into a short period of time, hopefully we will accomplish all those goals and report back on what it is that we are able to accomplish. I think that's all I have. We do have an executive session. I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for a conference with attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, as well as to consider the disposition of real property. Is there a second?
Second to move.
Ann?
Saluda?
Yes.
Ice Mayor Amrose Grums?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. And do we, it says here reconvene, are we reconvening or?
Yes, she will, may not, reconvene for the purpose of formally...
There will be no business transaction, but we will reconvene to close the meeting.